Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I now call this meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order at 5:20 PM. And thank you so much for your patience as we had a closed session that ran a little bit long, had much to discuss. I appreciate your patience as we've gotten started a little bit late today. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Maple.
I am here. Okay, Councilmember Tao, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
... from those indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maydou Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin-Win Two peoples, and the people of Watanrachariah, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Tao. I appreciate you. Okay, Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No, there's nothing to report out.
Thank you very much. All right, so that leads us to our first special presentation of the evening. We have Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We, as a council, missed out on the opportunity to really tell our planning staff the excellent job that they did when we finally adopted our 2040 general plan update. It is now in effect and effective as 30 days have gone by, and I can think of no better way than we really need to recognize and congratulate our planning staff because not only for the last several years have you been working on the 2040 general plan update, but as well as the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, as well as the Age Friendly Community Action Plan. And I don't think people quite understand how much time and effort goes into it, but it really sets the stage for city planners and us as a future, as council members, how do we safely continue to develop our community? How do we reinvest and reduce the pollution in the air quality and produce more housing and bike-friendly and safer neighborhoods? Because they all go into the plan of how we can make Sacramento a livable, walkable community. That really is the envy of the world. And I think our 2040 general plan, I'd like to brag, is kind of the most progressive of that of where we need to go, maybe not in the world, but in the United States. We still, you know, we've got to strive for a little bit more. I am envious of Paris's bike lanes, just saying. But what you guys did over the last couple of years of meeting over 4,000 residents over the past five years in workshops, listening sessions, and meeting in the community, as well as addressing many of the pressing issues that you've heard over different iterations of this council. And people, I don't think, understand, like, five years, you've actually got six new council members. And to come up with a plan that really embodies where it brought all of us together, brought Sacramento together, how rare is it that when you adopted general plan that we didn't have a lot of no? We had yeses. We had people signing up to say, yes, this is where we should be as Sacramento, and this is what we should do. So people don't always recognize what you do and the amount of work you do and how pivotal it is for setting the stage of Sacramento for the next 10 to 20 years to come. So for me, this is just, and I know for the rest of my colleagues, a way to say thank you, congratulate you. I hope you have well-deserved and planned vacations coming. It has been an enormous amount of work. And then thank you, because I know you met with each council office to get our ideas, to work specifically in our communities, to make sure things that we know about our areas are addressed. So I'd like to call up Remy Mendoza, who is the project manager for the general plan update, to just say a couple of words before we get to take pictures.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Remy Mendoza with the Community Development Department. A major overhaul and update of the general plan and climate action plan is such a significant undertaking that it only occurs once every 10 years. We're very proud that this was truly a collaborative effort from our city boards and commissions, community-based organizations and advocates, our environmental justice working group, our youth and older adult, the development community, the business community, dozens of organizations and agencies that partnered with us, and thousands of community members that participated. We're also very fortunate that we've had a dedicated team of city staff, some who are with me here today, and staff from every single department that lent their subject matter expertise to help shape these plans over the years. On behalf of the team, we want to especially thank the city council for your continuous leadership and support, so that staff could bring forward long-range plans with bold policies and actions that will help us achieve our vision to make Sacramento a national model of sustainable, equitable growth and community development. Thank you.
Open it up to councilmembers if you want to say a couple of words.
Yeah, well, the work was historic. I mean, and it has gotten state and even beyond-state recognition and praise, especially the housing element piece of it, and the innovation in terms of incentivizing more housing types to try to deal with our housing supply crisis and affordability crisis. And this was recognized far and beyond just Sacramento. And so I'm really proud of your work and to have been associated with this, you know? And it's going to serve the people of Sacramento very well in the decade to come, because we're going to be seen, I hope, as a frontrunner and a model for how to at least do better when it comes to providing more workforce and affordable housing of all types for people. And all we can say is, as Councilmember Kaplan has already done, is thank you. Thank you very much. It's great work.
I'd like to call city planning staff here in the audience up. You don't get to sit there, y'all. Come down for a picture.
Thank you.
Good job, team.
Thank you.
Hi, folks.
Thank you.
Good job, everybody.
Come on in.
Mayor's in the middle.
Mayor's in the middle.
Be on the other side of the mayor.
Where do I?
Okay, right here.
Okay, here we go.
All right, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Remy has 11 siblings, so he's almost catching up to you and your siblings.
What number are you?
Remy.
Number five.
What number are you?
Number five.
What number are you?
Number five.
Ah, you're number five.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Great way to start the afternoon. We have another very important presentation. I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated. And we've got some really special guests in the audience here today. I'm very proud to present our recognition of the young artists at American Legion High School. So you may have seen a very special art installation in City Hall. If you haven't, when you exit out these doors and through the lobby to the left, you'll have an opportunity to take a look at that and some of the wonderful art that's out there right now. I'm very excited to welcome members of our Office of Arts and Culture, the Center for Sacramento History, local artists and students, and staff from American Legion High School in Oak Park for the special presentation. So you may recall, and this actually started with Councilmember May Vang, when she did an exhibit with the Center for Sacramento History and Students. I was inspired by that. And one of the first things I did, I think it might have been even that evening, if not the next morning, I emailed our wonderful staff at the Center for Sacramento History, and I said, hey, can we do that, too? And so we had a series of meetings and calls, and one of the things that we really wanted to make sure that we focused on was, for one, having high school students to be able to tell their stories and being able to tell some of the stories from the Oak Park community. So we're really excited about that. So this is called the "We Are Who We Are" exhibit. It's part of the Kids Collect program that we mentioned. It was launched, it has 23 students from American Legion High School, and they were asked to write a personal essay as a part of their fall semester class under Ms. Anna Gutierrez, who is here with us as well. The students were asked to share a personal story that shows who they are, where they came from, or a perspective that they would like to share with the world. To help tell these stories with a visual component in an exhibition format, our Office of Arts and Culture tapped into their network of local artists to create unique pieces of art that were inspired by the students' stories. And I think that is wonderful and incredibly unique, and we thank them. So we do have some of the artists in the room this evening. They'll be sharing their Instagram handles on social media, so their folks can find you. But can you please stand up so that you can be recognized? Don't be afraid.
These stories and artworks are hosted for exhibit right here, as I mentioned.
And then I would love to invite up Ms. Gutierrez to please come say a few words at the dais and share about your experience, I'm sorry, your students' experience with this program. Thank you so much, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I am Anna Gabriela, or as my students call me, Ms. G. I teach English and student government at American Legion High School. Our school focuses mainly on credit recovery, which means that we have a variety of backgrounds from our students, different walks of life from Sacramento. Most of the time, our students are on the credit deficient list, and so they come to us to go ahead and acquire or require those credits, while others come to us needing additional services combined with credit recovery. When I presented this project, I was excited to try something new with my students. I asked them a series of questions, and it prompted them to think of a time or an event changed their lives for better or worse, motivated them, challenged them, propelled them forward, or held them back. I was prepared to read many essays, but what I was not prepared for was the vulnerability and the emotion in their essays and in their stories. Many spoke of happy moments in their lives, others sad moments, like coming to California for the first time and visiting Oak Park, or deaths in the family. Some were encouraging, while others were a bit traumatic. I'm proud of this project and my students and their efforts, as many used this time to work through their emotions, seek assistance, work through their trauma. Together, we were able to work with our administration and social worker to guide our students to create healthier lifestyles for them. However, as much as I'd like to say that we helped every student, we at least opened the door of conversation for others. Collectively, we are proud of this exhibit. We are who we are, because it allows our students, Sacramento students, Oak Park students, to really showcase to our community and to Sacramento who they really are, to paint a picture of what they've done, what they've been through, provide insight on what our youth are actually experiencing on a daily basis. So I'm very proud of my students, very proud of their accomplishments, and I'm honored to represent them here today. Thank you.
And also thank the incredible District 5 team, my chief of staff, Ryan Brown, over here, and Michael Benjamin. Thank you. They did put together a reception just before this, and I heard it was wonderful, even though we had closed session. So if it's okay, I would love to invite you, Ms. G, and the students up to take a photo with us and to give you this resolution. I need Jason in a picture, sorry.
Marcia? Come on, I've got eyes on you.
You deserve to be in that picture, too. I'm going to get the first one from...
Oh, my God, okay.
Megan, I'm telling you, I'll take one for you.
All right, so right here, and one, two, three, and...
And one, two, three.
Thank you all so much. Mayor, in my haste, we skipped one student's speech, so...
We always have time to hear from one more student. Please come on up.
Hello, my name is Inaya Kenty. I'm 18 years old, and the project I was assigned affected and empowered me in many ways, as well as showed me, as a young adolescent growing up striving for the best that I can accomplish anything in life. Jobs often help teens develop career skills, financial management, and independence. These skills guarantee a pathway to success. This experience enhanced me as a person socially and mentally. Watching myself improve and grow as well as have something to call my own that I worked for as a young adult is everything to me. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you for welcoming me and letting me speak.
Thank you. And you spoke very, very well. Thank you. Go, we've got councilmembers Gera and May Vang and Eric Gera, I'm sorry. Oh, it's on the consent calendar, okay. We'll get there in a moment. Good. All right, that concludes the happy start to our afternoon here with the two special presentations. We now move to the consent calendar. There are 16 items. Are there any items? I've got everybody up here. Okay, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Not pulling an item, but just wanted to comment on item 14 and provide some direction.
Got it. Councilmember Gera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be speaking on item number three and also item number 14, providing direction.
Very good. Councilmember Kaplan?
I need to pull and register an abstention on item 10. I'm within the sphere of influence. It is a conflict of interest for me to have any position.
So why don't we have the motion on the consent calendar include your abstention? Is that okay?
That's cool.
Okay.
And then comment on item four.
Four, did you say?
Yes.
Councilmember Tao?
Just comment on item number five.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Comment on item three.
Councilmember Vang? We already did it. Sorry. Okay. Is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have no speaker slip for the consent calendar.
All right, then, let's go in order here. We'll start with item three, councilmembers Gera and Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. One, it's a very exciting time for this item today. If I think back in 2015, the first time that we pulled the community together to talk about Stockton Boulevard, and right now, the Stockton Boulevard plan, we're asking people to put public input. But this item, Mr. Mayor, reminds us of what we need to do to really make significant change for our communities in South Sacramento, and that's to support an MOU to create a bus rapid transit system. In 2015, we pulled together a group of folks to say, you know, our Stockton Boulevard can no longer be the old Highway 99 that it once used to be. And in fact, we should go back to an earlier time when we actually had the streetcar down the center of Stockton Boulevard, and we had bus rapid transit. So I want to thank our city staff through a number of efforts here, because while this is an MOU with RT, it really has been the leadership of the city that has brought forward the county and RT of three agencies to be able to move an item forward. Why is this such a big challenge and momentous move? Because if you go down Stockton Boulevard, you'll know that it's part city, part county, and then also a joint powers authority. So just the challenge in moving forward in this is critical, and this will help us push the needle forward to be more aggressive in securing federal dollars. I want to thank my colleagues that are going to DC to advocate for transportation funding and remind them that Stockton Boulevard deserves this level of support to have some public transit. And it's exciting to see where, at this point, where it's no longer, you know, whether we should have transit and a bus rapid transit system on Stockton Boulevard, but when we will do it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, excited about this item. I'll move the item. I have additional direction when we get to item number 14, but I'll move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
With the abstention?
With motion, with noting the abstention on item number 10 for Councilmember Kaplan.
Very good. Is there a second on the consent? Okay, seconded co-equally by the Vice Mayor and Mayor Protem. Okay, on item three.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And I cannot say anything better than my colleague, Councilmember Gera, just did, but I did want to note that we recently did a bus tour along the Boulevard with the mayor, with many of our offices, including the county and regional transit and others, and SACOG. And this is such a huge opportunity for our region, for Stockton Boulevard, for South Sacramento, but the city as a whole, the county. And this is us also putting some money in the game to make sure that we're actually have... skin in the game. That's the term I'm looking for. We have some skin in the game to make some improvements on Stockton Boulevard. And I also just want to give a lot of credit also to former Councilmember Jason Year for his work, along with Councilmember Gera and others, on this longstanding project. I think it's going to be vitally important. I can't wait for it to get off the ground. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yes, part of that bus tour, and it's really, it's an example of inclusive economic development in action and in real time, and transportation, public transportation is a big part of revitalizing a key commercial corridor in our city like Stockton Boulevard and making it accessible and available to all people. All right, Councilmember Kaplan, item four.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to call out the Sierra Service Project, which is a Californians for All Youth Force Development program, and thank them for finding a little extra money to increase the amount of students that they are going to serve in workforce development, which there's three different cohorts among urban agriculture, community building, and energy conservation, as well as computer-aided drafting class. Workforce development for our youth is so very important. But one of the things where I see this, where as a city, I hope we can do a little better, is, so we've done this. Where's the report back? I think it's really important when we fund something like this, we also see what is the follow-through and the benefit, what is the metric, so that we make sure when we are doing workforce development for our youth, that we actually know that the money is going where it needs to go, and the training is getting to our students, and what benefit that is going towards. Thank you.
Thank you. This is item five. Councilmember Tao?
So this item right here is a long time coming for Mama Marx Park. Margaret Marx was a community icon who served meals to the community, and this park is in the heart of the Apostle Heights. And, you know, I would like to commend staff for getting this project underway. And also, we have our Twin River School Board trustee in the stand with our community association, who's been pushing for this project. And so this is creating a splash pad for Mama Marx Park that, you know, we hope to activate by the summer, so that kids in our community could definitely enjoy. This is a small win for the area, and so definitely, I would like to commend Parks for that. Definitely would love to work with the community and Parks to, you know, do an opening for the community once it's done.
Right, it's a long time coming, and thank you. That's great. Councilmember Kaplan abstained on that. Item 14 is the last item where members want to comment, and that's councilmembers Vang and Gera and our two SETA board members.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. As chair this year of the Sacramento Employment Training Agency, we're actually undergoing many, many changes. From our branding, we're rebranding our logo, to what we're doing today, hiring a new executive director. As many of you know, SETA oversees our childcare Head Start program, they oversee many of our refugee programs, but one thing that they're also responsible for in terms of partnering with the county and the city is also connecting many of our residents to economic and employment opportunities. And today, what we're taking on today, item 14, is we're voting to confirm our new executive director of SETA. I believe our county partners voted on this item. They actually approved this item this morning, and so we're going to try to cross the finish line and get our new executive director there. I'd like to actually take this opportunity to welcome our new SETA director, Dr. Anita Maldonado. I would love for her to come up and share a little bit about herself. She has more than 25-plus years of experience in various social service fields. Recently, she served as the chief executive officer of the California Human Development. She's done so many things from affordable housing to workforce development, to working with migrant and seasonal farm workers, to disability services, and the list just goes on. Really excited to bring her on. We haven't approved it yet. We're hoping with this vote we will, but would love for her just to come up and introduce herself and say a few words.
Welcome. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for that lovely introduction. I think she said it all, so I'm not going to say much more, except just thank you for, you know, considering your approval tonight. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I'd like to personally thank Assistant City Manager Mike Jassel for helping me throughout this process, and also acknowledge members of the SETA board that I'll be working with, which are councilmembers Gera and our Chair, Councilwoman Vang. I also want to give a special shout-out to Dietze Sarban, who's here with me, and she's been serving as the interim executive director during this time. I look forward to working with you. Thank you so much for having me.
Councilmember Gera?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. I appreciate your time here and also your commitment to all of the needs that our working families are looking for to find a path for better life here. I also want to thank the leadership of our Chair of SETA, you know, Chair Vang at the SETA board for this effort. And yes, there is a lot of change going forward, so proud to be supporting this motion, you know? And with our vote, you know, we shall be confirmed here for the position. I do want to thank our Assistant City Manager and City Manager for their due diligence in the recruitment process. I know that is a dual, it's not done unilaterally. You have to do it with our county partners, and we appreciate that effort. With that, Mr. Mayor, as part of the motion here, I'm going to provide some direction to the City Manager. And for the city clerk and the city manager, I've got some draft languages here. I'm going to direct the City Manager to work with our staff to draft amendments to the SETA Joint Powers Agreement that would change the JPA agreement for the city and for the city council and the board supervisors here. The amendment would give the SETA governing boards the sole authority to appoint and dismiss the SETA executive director. In the past, this has not been an authority of the board. Also, to look at expanding the SETA governing board as well, from five members to seven members, so it reflects the needs of labor, of business community, and also one of our largest partners, which is our community college system as well. And also to provide authority here that the Vice Chair and the Chair of the Board only be members from our elected body, and also some authority on acquisition and thresholds of acquisition, and most importantly here, that... And most importantly here, that provided that the amendment become effective July 1st of 2024, the direction of the City Manager here that we'd like to do is to make sure that the City Manager bring this amendment back for this council to review and vote on no later than June 26th. So I think that's enough time for our City Attorney, but that'll give our council time to review those amendments and move forward. With that, I think we pass copies over to the Clerk and the City Manager here.
We need to add, ask the maker of the consent calendar motion to add that in the second or to add that.
Yeah, is the second, the second or who seconded, by the way? It was my motion, by the way.
Oh, it's your motion, so you're adding it.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, you'll accept that motion. Okay. Good, good, good. Okay.
Thank you very much. And with that, you know, I don't want to count the chickens before they're hatched, but, you know, congratulations, congratulations, Dr. Maldonado, again.
Congratulations, Dr. Maldonado. I look forward to getting to know you. It's really important agency and workforce is a key underpinning of our economic strategy here in the city, so look forward to hearing your big ideas. Thank you. All right. The consent calendar with the addition just by Councilmember Gedda and Councilmember Kaplan's abstention on the item discussed earlier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. The consent calendar passes. Let us now move to our public hearings, items 17 through 19. I hope these should be relatively quick if they're not controversial. How do we, I don't know if we can take them all up together. I know they need separate votes and motions, but let's see if we can do the presentations together.
Want all three of them together?
Well, why not?
I wanted to spend as much time as I could enjoying you while I'm up here.
Whatever way you want. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and members of the City Council. My name is Thomas Adams. I'm with Engineering Services Division as part of the Department of Public Works. The item before you is a request for the second-time extension of 108 temporary closures of alleys and streets that are actively closed. The temporary locations, closure locations listed in the staff report were approved for the preceding first-time extension under Resolution 2022-0319. The temporary closures of the alleys and the streets identified in this report have security gates and ballers installed to help assist in preventing the occurrence and recurrence of serious and continual criminal activity. To keep the gates and ballers in place as part of the initial temporary closure of 18 months and extend the closure for additional 18 months requires City Council approval per Vehicle Code Section 21101.4 and Sacramento City Code 12.16. The time extensions of the temporary closures will still allow the adjacent property owners and residents continued access to their secure areas that have security devices in place. City staff, the Police Department, Fire Department, and Transportation Division all support these extensions of these closures to help deter criminal activity for the next 18 months. That concludes the presentation on that item number 17. Item number 18, there are two items here requesting temporary closure. One is the alley located at 60 Nedrick Court in Council District 8 and a portion of Shining Star Drive and at Morrison Creek located in Council District 5. Both locations were previously approved for temporary closure in 2003 and 2006 respectively. The temporary closure of both locations was deemed necessary for the protection or preservation of public peace, safety, health, or welfare of the neighborhoods. The temporary closure for both locations were approved for an initial timeframe of 18 months. To maintain the closures of a time extension had to be approved by City Council prior to the 18-month expiration. Unfortunately, the closures were both, for both locations had expired. While moving forward, the adjacent residents support the temporary closures and want to keep the gates in place to maintain the closure to help assist in preventing the occurrence of serious and continual criminal activity. Again, staff, Police Department, Fire, and Transportation Division supports these closures. Item 19. This item before you is a temporary closure of two public alleys located in Council District 2. The first alley is located west of Realinda Boulevard between Savano Street and Bray Avenue, and the second alley is Amherst Alley located between Del Paso Boulevard, Realinda Boulevard, Lampasses, and Eleanor Avenues. Both locations were previously requested for temporary closure to address issues of criminal activity but were not presented to City Council for approval. This request for temporary closure is being presented to City Council now per the requirements of the California Vehicle Code and Sacramento City Code. Both alleys have existing wrought iron gates that meet city standards. Approving the temporary closure for both locations will assist in providing protection or preservation of the public peace, safety, health, and welfare for both areas. City staff, the Police Department, Fire, and Transportation Division both support these, both of these closures in District 2. That's end of those three.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Great. We do have one speaker on item 19, none on 17 or 18, so let's hear from the one speaker on 19, and then we can take each of these items up by motion separately.
Thank you. Darryl Collins is speaking on item 19.
Excuse me, Mr. Adams.
Oh, I didn't know he was standing right there.
That's okay.
You're all right.
That's all good.
Need a little company.
Good, go, go, go.
Yeah, just looking at him.
Once you go, go right to the podium there. There we go.
Item number 19.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate, good evening, Mayor and Council. But yeah, we've had a lot of fires, a lot of unhoused and start fires in the alley, burglarized four or five times, drug movement. So I just want to reiterate, we do really need this. Spoke to all our neighbors and everybody's in agreeance. We need to minimize the damage and the things that are happening in that area, so I most definitely approve.
I have no more speakers.
Okay. Let's hear from members. We take motions on one or all. Can we take the motion together or do they need to be separately, all three items?
Probably a good idea to open and close the public hearing separately.
Separately, okay, no problem.
I'd like to open and close the public hearing for item 18.
And move the item.
And move the item.
Is there a second? Seconded on that, but let's hear if we have members here. Councilmember Gedda and then Tau.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just thank, you know, Mr. Adams and all of the engineering team. I know we had some significant issues on 52nd Street in San Francisco in the Colonial Heights neighborhood, and that has improved dramatically, dramatically, that effort there. I do want to thank everyone who was engaged in helping clean up that area. It's right next to the Colonial Heights Library, and it was a walking path for not only to a bus stop but also to our library and our local park. So, you know, the maintenance of these alleys is critical, and I just want to thank everyone for their work in this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Councilmember Tau?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Adams for, you know, putting this forward. Definitely in my district, District 2, you know, we're a very old district that has a lot of alleys in Apostle Heights and Old North Sacramento. And, you know, we see a lot of vagrants, a lot of issues on the alleyways because it has, it's a big access that cars can just drive through. So I think closure of the alleys would allow us to deter legal dumping and anything along those alleys, so I do support this item.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Tau. So let's, we have a motion to second item 17, including opening and closing the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Is there a motion on 18, including opening and closing the public hearing?
Abstain.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Item 19.
I heard a sound.
You should move that one, Councilmember Tau. And open and close the public hearing. Seconded by Councilmember Kaplan. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Mr. Adams, thank you. Good work. We know a lot of work goes into this, even if it takes five minutes to dispense with it, we appreciate you. And thank you.
See you next time.
See you next time. Okay. Let's now move to the discussion calendar. We have two very important items tonight. The first is the feasibility analysis, or constraints analysis, as they call it, for the 102 acres. We've been looking forward to this conversation. Who is presenting on this? Hi. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Alexi Wordell, an Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the 102-acre city-owned site located in South Sacramento, focusing on the findings from our Opportunities and Constraints Analysis. Joining me tonight is our project team, led by Amy Lappin of Economic and Planning Systems. Our consultants from Rainy, Madrone Ecological Consulting, and Wood Rogers are also present this evening and are prepared to answer questions. This evening, our agenda includes providing background about the site, the key considerations and findings of the site analysis, and next steps. The purpose of this presentation and subsequent discussion is twofold: to share our findings and to engage in a conversation about council's preferred policy direction for the future of the 102-acre site. The site is in District 8 between Meadowview Road to the north and Kasumnas River Boulevard to the south. North of the site are public and quasi-public facilities, while east of the site is the Detroit community, including Susan B. Anthony Elementary School and residences. The land west and south of the site is undeveloped, and the site does not currently have access to roadways and utilities. I also wanted to point out that the Morrison Creek Light Rail Station is about a half-mile southeast of the site, and Interstate 5 is about a mile or so west of the site. Acquired from the U.S. Department of Labor in January 2022 for $12.3 million, the 102-acre undeveloped parcel has been vacant since 1978, with its only development being an oval asphalt track once used by the California Highway Patrol for test driving. Adjacent planned developments, Delta Shores to the east and Stone Beetland to the south, include a mix of planned uses as well as future roadway and utility connections to which the 102-acre site could connect in the future. Staff initiated this analysis to both inform the public and City Council about the site's potential. Understanding its opportunities and constraints is important before council makes a decision regarding both the short and long-term uses of the site. Our analysis aimed to provide enough information to help council answer two key questions: how should the site be developed, and what are the general land uses to be developed at the site? We began by reviewing the site's initial conditions and community input, followed by a market analysis to inform potential land use scenarios. These scenarios helped us assess various factors, including circulation considerations, environmental conditions, mitigation, development, and maintenance costs, and potential revenue streams. The initial conditions assessment revealed two key findings. The site is landlocked, meaning it lacks permanent public roadway access, and it has approximately 10 acres of wetland habitat, presenting both challenges and opportunities for site development. The site's ecological features, including a three-acre man-made stormwater catchment pond and the seasonal wetlands throughout, are significant. They reflect the site's past disturbances but highlight the need for careful environmental What this means is that the presence of the wetland features will incur a range of mitigation costs for compliance with state and federal regulations, whether preserved or removed. After establishing a baseline understanding of the site, we turned to developing a range of land uses to study, which were informed by District 8 Listening Sessions hosted by Councilmember Vang's office. In summary, four key community desires emerged: inclusive economic development, affordable housing, civic amenities, and support for unhoused neighbors, shaping our approach to potential land uses. Additionally, I would like to note that we conducted a planning charrette involving key community figures and city staff to deliberate on the ideal mix of land uses for the site. Our economic consultants assessed the market demand of the community's preferred land use types. The land uses indicated with a star, including mixed-income housing, a mix of uses, recreation and sports facilities, and interim homelessness services, were shown to have higher feasibility due to demand in combination with the site's location and proximity to other uses. Next, the team conceptualized the four land uses shown here. These concepts were developed for analysis purposes only, so we could understand how different land uses and arrangements would affect cost and revenue outcomes. As you'll see, the concepts range from an all-sports use, shown in Concept 1, to an all-residential use, shown in Concept 3. Concepts 2A and 2B include both a smaller sports complex and housing. The key difference between these two middle scenarios is how the wetlands are treated. Concept 2A includes a 15-acre wetland preserve, whereas Concept 2B has more land available for residential uses and a more regular shape for the sports complex. In addition to these long-term uses, I also want to note that the analysis considered an interim shelter for unhoused neighbors that could be built on the site after the access and utilities are available but before the site is built out. I'll be discussing our findings in more detail, which are a bit complex, and we will also have a chance to go over any details later. So before I share what these numbers mean, I'd like to provide background on the assumptions that our consultants made to estimate the potential costs and revenues. The analysis was based on several key assumptions about the development process, costs, and potential revenue streams. The study was conservative in order to understand the costliest scenarios for the city. Therefore, the financial analysis assumes the city would do additional site planning, entitle the site, and mitigate environmental impacts before any sale. The analysis also assumed that the city would develop the backbone infrastructure and public amenities, including either a sports or recreation complex or a neighborhood park. When we look at costs, the analysis accounts for the upfront expenses related to infrastructure and public amenities construction, alongside the ongoing costs of maintenance and operations of these public amenities. And lastly, revenue expectations include the sale of the residential land, and over a 30-year period, additional income is projected from a sports complex through various streams, including transient occupancy tax from visitors, sales tax, and user fees. In summary, the findings show that each of the first three land use concepts with a sports complex would result in a negative net revenue ranging from $120 million to $59 million. The negative net revenue variation between scenarios 2A and 2B illustrates the potential impact of preserving some of the wetlands. Therefore, Concept 2B has increased revenue projected from more residential land that could be sold for private development. The exclusively residential scenario was found to yield a positive net revenue of close to $34 million. However, it assumes that the city would improve the site and mitigate before selling. Again, these findings assume costs and revenues over 30 years, and that the city would pay for the initial development, as well as cover ongoing maintenance and operation costs. If a private developer or operator were involved, if the sports complex were a different size, or if the city were to sell the land without improving it, the financial results could be significantly different. If directed by council, to explore the possibility of a sports complex through a private partnership, then staff could solicit private development interest through a request for qualifications After receiving policy direction from council and selecting a development partner, detailed site planning would begin. Development of a large site with environmental constraints and a lack of infrastructure and roadways takes many years. Development of the 102-acre site is anticipated to take at least six years. To get to that point, and after listening to council's discussion tonight, our next steps involve sharing these findings with the community, developing recommendations for the site development process and the general mix of land uses, and returning to council for policy direction. Policy direction would allow staff to outline the vision, goals, and expectations for site development, and if directed to do so, staff would then solicit prospective partners. outlining the development opportunity, the city's expectations, and the criteria for selection. This process would allow the city to compare proposals and select a preferred development partner. This concludes staff's presentation. I appreciate your time and attention this evening, and we do have our consultants here for questions as well. Thank you so much.
So, great presentation, Ms. Wardell. So, you're saying this can't get all built by December?
That would be a little tricky.
Okay. That's the unfortunate conclusion. This is, it was a good presentation. We want to get into this, and we will. We've got six people who want to testify, and then I know I'm going to turn it over to the district council members, champion this along with the city manager, and start this discussion. I'll weigh in at the appropriate point. Here we go.
Our first speaker is Charles Fost, then Beau Mua, Joanna Mack, Robert Copeland, Angela Miles, and then Vince Sales.
The purpose and motive here is to try to get more property to house our unsheltered homeless population. That is the purpose and motive here. That was repeated twice, maybe three times, by the mayor and the city manager when they were talking about buying this property. It was supposed to be for homeless shelter and services. Offering maybe four acres of temporary space for homeless shelter and services is a total waste of this. The city was promised an actual homeless solution, and it was going to be, part of this was going to be on that property. And that's been completely thrown away, or looks like it's been thrown away. I think you guys really owe the city an actual solution to homelessness, a long-term, permanent solution, not something that's going to be temporary while something else gets figured out. And you guys promised them that during this meeting, multiple times. Actually, during that meeting, it was said that the majority of the land was going to be used for shelter and services. There was going to be some of the land used for other things. And Mai, during that meeting, you brought up that you wanted it to be used for residential housing and low-income housing and stuff. So you were honest about that during that meeting, so thank you. But during that meeting, it really was all about this being used for shelter and services. So it's kind of disappointing that it's not even being considered to be used for that after years of whatever. Oh, no, I still have, sorry. One more thing I wanted to say. The only constraint, because it's about the constraints on the land, the only constraint you guys should be considering is that it must be used. At least 51 of those acres must be used for shelter and services for homelessness. Or build an A stadium there. You know, that's another option.
Thank you for your comments. Beau Mua. So it's Joanna, then Robert, then Angela, and Vince.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Beau Mua, and I serve as the principal of Susan B. Anthony Elementary, situated adjacent to the 102-acre property. Additionally, I am honored to serve on Councilmember Mai Vang's 102 Advisory Committee. First and foremost, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the city staff, particularly Alexi and Elizabeth, for their diligent efforts. Their engagement with the 102-Acre Advisory Committee has been invaluable in advancing the Opportunities and Constraints Analysis for our community. When the 102-acre property was identified and acquired, Councilmember Mai Vang conducted seven listening sessions, one of which was held at Susan B. Anthony Elementary. During this session, our cafeteria was filled with residents and youth all eager to share their aspirations for the project. Throughout these sessions, our students and families emphasized the pressing need for economic opportunities to empower our youth, such as a youth sports complex. Additionally, they underscored the importance of ensuring walkable access to civic amenities and affordable housing to promote the health and well-being of our families. As the principal of Susan B. Anthony School, I am deeply committed to nurturing opportunities for our youth, particularly in our low-income community in South Sacramento. It is evident that intentional investments and development in South Sacramento are crucial to fostering connectivity within entire city and region. In 2022, the voters passed Measure N, allocating transient occupancy tax, TOT dollars, to be spent beyond downtown with the aim of promoting economic opportunities across all neighborhoods. It is imperative that the mayor and council honor this commitment to the residents and voters of South Sacramento. Our families in South Sacramento deserve equitable access to opportunities and shared prosperity within our region. Let us ensure that we invest in South Sacramento, building a city that is not only more beautiful, but also more accessible, healthy, and vibrant for our youth and families in Detroit, Meadowview, and all of South Sacramento. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joanna Mack, then Robert Copeland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Joanna Mack, and I'm an architect and member of 102-Acre Advisory Committee. I was also part of a task force to study land use and transportation decisions that contribute to health and economic disparities of South Sacramento. I would like to express support and excitement for the 102 acres because it has the opportunity to rectify years of underinvestment and provide options for employment, mixture of housings, and quality healthcare that is desperately needed in South Sacramento. This is not just my thoughts, but thoughts of the community through multiple community engagement sessions that have been associated with the Health and Equity Task Force for the last 18 months, starting in 2019 and ending in 2022. Top priorities that we heard from the community was not just about what they wanted within that parcel, but also the process. The most resounding thing that we heard from the community was "design with us and not at us." They want a participatory community process that's authentic, that empowers residents to engage their neighborhoods in decision-making by providing guidance on a range of issues, including project funding, budget, site activation, and development approvals, not just now, but all the way through the process of the proposal. So, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland.
My preferred proposal would be a proposal sig. We need more affordable housing in all parts of Sacramento. And why would this big property have been so long? Do your job. Don't shake your head on me, Mayor Stenberg. Do your damn job. Why would it have been so long, before you bought it? Can you answer that, somebody? No, I don't think so, because City Council does not know what they're doing. Quit trying to ruin the city, and do your frickin' job.
Thank you for your comments. Angela Miles. Angela, then Vince.
Hi, thank you for your time. Initially, the 102 acres was thought to have been acquired for homeless, and it's still vacant. I think that you guys have a big homeless problem everywhere, not just in District 2, where it's awful, very awful. But you have more than enough land to house these people and take care of the city's entire homelessness on 102 acres. That is, that's like a city of its own. So you guys should think about housing the homeless there and taking them off the street, because really, you're doing them a disservice. You're not only doing the taxpayers a disservice by leaving them there for us to be fearful and whatever's going on over there, because it's not just homelessness, it's illegal activities going on. But you're also doing them a disservice by not giving them what they need. So you drop them a little food here, you drop them a little food there, you drop them a blanket here. But keep them centralized. Help them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Vince Sales, then Sonia Bradley.
Good evening, Mayor Stenberg and council members. My name is Vince Sales. I'm the CEO of Everyday Impact Consulting, a social impact consulting firm based here in Sacramento. Our firm conducted and helped to facilitate the seven listening sessions that you heard about, and wrote the 102 Acres Report that's now included as an appendix in the city's Analysis and Constraints Report. We provided these services pro bono because our firm's founder grew up in Sacramento. We also saw firsthand the disproportionate impact of COVID in District 8 through the various vaccination drives, testing, and food deliveries that our team participated in. I myself am a resident of District 8. I wish to thank the staff, the city staff, for your updated report and analysis, and Councilmember Mai Vang for your leadership. Our firm looks forward to continuing to help in uplifting the voices of our communities on behalf of this opportunity, so as you consider your next steps. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sonia Bradley.
Good evening. I'm here to represent Visit Sacramento. I'm actually representative on the 102-Acre Advisory Committee meeting, committee. I want to thank Councilmember Vang for setting up the committee. Because of the passage of Measure N, we were able to serve on this committee, and I appreciate that. I just want to say that we do look forward to the continued development and analysis of this site. It's very important to us because we are very supportive of the development of an indoor and outdoor sports facility for our region and for that community as well to reap the benefits of the Measure N passage, as well as reap the benefits of tourism for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, thank you to the members of the public. Let's turn it over to the council. I'll start with the council member who's organized much of this. Councilmember May.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually just have more comments. I'm actually really eager to go out to the community to share the opportunity constraint analysis. And so I will do my best to keep my comments short, but it'll be a little long with no questions. But I'm eager to actually go out to the community to get their reaction, to hear what they have to say. And so first, I just want to say thank you to city staff, Alexi and Elizabeth, the entire economic team, all the researchers as well. And city staff were just working really hard to get us to this moment, right? This isn't something that's going to happen overnight. It takes steadfast advocacy and consistency in order to move a project like this along. And you saw earlier in one of the PowerPoint slides that it may take seven to eight years, and the mayor and I might not even be here. But it's about setting the foundation guided by the community to make sure that we set this development up in a way that's going to be the most beneficial to uplift all of our families in South Sacramento. I just want to reiterate, you know, when we first identified the site and purchased the property, there was a commitment from me, and I said it pretty clear from the very beginning, y'all can PRA, request my emails, whatever y'all want to do. But my commitment was that we were going to ensure that this property was going to be a catalyst for South Sacramento. And if possible, also short-term uses as temporary shelter, right? And so I am not hiding away from either/or, right? It's not either/or, it's all of it. I'm committed to listening to our community to ensure that all voices is going to be heard through this process. And that's the reason why we held seven intentional listening sessions, three of them being around neighborhoods that surrounded the 102 acres. We did one just with youth. We did one just with seniors. We did one just with our unhoused residents and advocates. And then we did one with just our minority small businesses. We were really intentional about reaching out to the community and listening to them and hearing what they wanted to see this site be developed. And then during these listening sessions, you heard from some of the speakers, many residents share the need for more affordable and permanent supportive housing for unhoused folks, right? And so I would just want to name that, because that's important. But we also talk up here a lot about homelessness. For every one person we house, three more enters the system. And so we also got to move upstream. There's a temporary shelter, but we got to figure out an economic opportunity to uplift our families from poverty, because many of our families right now in South Sacramento is one paycheck away from being homeless. And so what I heard from the community is that they have this shared vision for a community-centered property that has amenities, that has, yes, a multi-use sports complex, which I know folks are saying we're in a deficit. We'll talk a little bit about where are we going to find the funding to make this happen? And it's possible. It's possible for East Sacramento. It's possible for downtown, and economic opportunity is also possible for South Sacramento. And then I just want to say, we are here now because it was our request to ask city staff. Our community is going to dream big of things we want to see, but there are limitations of what we can and can't do on this property. And that's what you saw today, and the report's about 360-plus pages long, about all the things we can and can't do on this property. You heard about limited access points in terms of connecting neighborhood. It's landlocked, right? You heard about the environmental assessment of the wetlands. And we're going to go back to the community to share all of this. I also want to note, you did see the different scenario in red, and I just want to name it, that this analysis doesn't include the assumption of community, nonprofit, and private and public partnerships, right? And you heard from staff, if you were to include those things, those numbers will change drastically, right? This is about, when you think about a general fund, what funds our general fund? It's our taxes, it's economic opportunity, and that can also happen in South Sacramento. And so I really believe this is a great start. Having this study helps us with standard assumptions on the biological kind of assessment of the land. It lets us know the kind of infrastructure needs, right? Even if we want to do a temporary shelter, whatnot. Y'all, we still need lights, we still need utilities. It's not as easy as putting, I've heard from folks, why don't we just put 10,000 people, unhoused folks, on that property? I'm going to just share with y'all, that is redlining homelessness all over again without supportive services and without ensuring that we are intentional about how we provide services for our community. And so this has to be a holistic approach, right? Because South Sacramento has always stepped up. I was the person who was supportive of the Meadowview Navigation Shelter when some folks said, no, we don't want that. Everyone needs to step up and do their part. South Sac has. And now here's an opportunity for an economic engine, a catalyst for our community. So many members in South Sacramento, in Meadowview, in Valley High, don't have the same opportunities as East Sacramento. And that's what our community deserves, nothing but the very best. And so I just want to say thank you to staff for your hard work. This project isn't going to happen overnight. It's going to need consistency, leadership, because as you saw on the slide, projects like this take seven to eight years, right? And so mayor and council comes and go, but you know who stay? It's the community. It's the community members. And so we're going to need you to be steadfast, to continue to be an advocate, to hold this mayor and council accountable, especially to those TOT dollars, right? Measure N was passed by the voters. And the reason why we did that was because a lot of those dollars that are invested in downtown, before Measure N passed, they weren't allowed to be invested outside of downtown. Now, because the voters passed Measure N, we can use some of those dollars and invest in South Sacramento. And so I hope that this mayor and this council stay committed to what the voters asked for and that it is time for South Sacramento to be able to rise up and to have the same economic opportunities. And with that, Mayor, I will close out and hand it over to you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your passionate comments. I do have a lot to say myself, but I want to hear from my other colleagues. And let's do that. So Councilmember Kaplan first, and then Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, because I wasn't on the council when the land was bought. And I know, City Manager, you guys have looked at, because it's been brought up. How long would it take to establish a site for temporary usage as unhoused? And have we looked at the cost to even make that a possibility?
Well, so first off, I want to echo something that Councilmember Vang talked about here, that when we acquired this property, it was, hey, there's 102 acres contiguous in our city that we could purchase, and we went through the motions there. So the due diligence was very limited, because it was an auction, if you will, so it was a bidding process. So what we have right now is an opportunity to do something that the community wants, the council member supports, but it is going to be a long-term hold. There is an option to do something short-term for homelessness. But as this council agreed upon in August, that city staff would seek out opportunities to cite these temporary shelters and tiny home villages. And so during our analysis, the 102 acres was a part of that analysis. And as I've shared in open session here, it was readiness. What has infrastructure, facilities, paved, you know, water, electricity, sewer. 102 acres did not rank as high as the Roseville Road one. And there are others that rank above that as well. Your question about how long would it take and how much would it cost to do something here? We've not looked at that, because we have other city properties that are more ready.
And thanks, because I think that bears, like, repeating, because we've had hodgepodge discussions. But like, now that this is in front of us, I think it's important to look at that I know you and your team have looked at things. And it's not that, because I wasn't here as to what was promised or not promised, but I want the public, and it also to be on the record, that the city has done its due diligence and looked at that. So just, and I appreciate that. So a couple of questions for staff, and I do want to thank them for all of this. And City Manager, you did answer one of my questions, because this is what I do in my day job, but for school districts. So it's a little different of a process, because one of the questions I had had was, what kind of analysis?
Yeah, so due to kind of the competitive nature of acquiring this site, the site was essentially sold as-is. So there was very limited opportunity for any sort of analysis to be conducted. Staff was aware that the site was landlocked and that there was potential for habitat, or for wetland habitat, but to what extent, that, that truly was unknown. And the only real information in the bidding package was a Phase One environmental assessment that was found to be clean.
Okay. And, and I think it's important to note that a Phase One environmental analysis is not that deep. It just highlights, eh, there's potential wetlands, potential Swainson Hawk, doesn't give details. As we, we look at how potentially this site and land will be developed, I think it's, it's really important, and I appreciate staff highlighting that this may take seven years. I've been part of development that's now 20 years in, and we're, we're still waiting for the development to work on the school site. So I, I think it's, we have to be very transparent and very honest, because I will tell you in my career, development always takes longer than you think it's going to take, and just when you have a plan, it changes. What we may see is stone land, beetland come in, and I think it's very important as we do that, that we reach out to the surrounding developers, because there should be a cost share on utilities and infrastructure, because I can tell you, onsite, offsite, rough developments are probably looking at 25 to 35 million dollars. And then when you start digging, you might as well add double that to a certain extent with the, with the unknown factor that, that comes in. So as you move forward, I hope that you reach out to the developers about that possibility, because I think that conversation needs to start now, so that it's part of the factor. And then I do support Councilmember Vang in looking at different sorts of funding sources or partnerships. The city is not a developer. I would very much like to urge and put forward that the city is not the developer. This is not something that, that the city should get in. So one question I do have is, can TOT funds be used for anything, can be used for any housing or any of that, or is it only just economic development?
Only economic development related to tourism.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, in the purchase of the property, because it's Surplus Land Act, it requires 25% affordable housing.
Yep.
Correct. Okay. And is this, would any development potentially be eligible for affordable housing credits?
I believe so, and also I meet monthly with SHRA, so we're beginning those conversations with SHRA as well, so, yeah.
I, I think it's just part of those, as, as you look at it, and then now using my, how Natomas has been master planned, and I have been part of the process of building every school in almost every neighborhood, except those that came in the 80s in South Natomas, I want the rest of the city to have the opportunity that many of the residents in North Natomas have, is the connection of walking and bike trails. So as, whatever this comes forward, I am very much in favor of keeping some of the wetlands and making it connecting through Stone Land, Beetland, which is to the south, and then the other development to the east, because they already have trail and walkways that I think would be very important, because then it would connect into the Detroit neighborhood, that they also have that access. As we move forward, I think one of the things that, that as, as you move forward for the city, when we look at the, the environmental impact and the constructibility, that we don't just take one pathway. I, I think, you know, my preference, Councilmember Vang, because we are housing shortage, there's got to be housing. There's, there's, like, I'm, like, there's got to be housing, and what creates it close to cost neutral? Because I know 2A and 2B kept 60 acres. I am all for a youth sports complex, but is there something where maybe there's more housing, less open space acreage, but keeps where the, you want the Swainson Hawk, like, I see them, I get geese, I get pelican, I get the crazy blue herons, the rest of the city should, should get and have that opportunity that those of us in North Natomas see? And I think by doing a little bit of a mixture, but the environmental analysis should look at how do we get somewhere cost-neutral if we put between 500 and 600 residential units and, and still keep some wetlands, but very much because it is next to a school, that is ideal for a youth sports complex that could also have, like, indoor volleyball tournaments, basketball tournaments. I think when we look at soccer fields, we're probably looking for something a little sooner rather than later. I don't want to take it off the table, but let's be realistic for competition. That may be a better area for really, like, some indoor, but also it's giving our teenagers somewhere to go, which they really need, because I think we miss that a little bit in this city. So I know, Councilmember Vang, you're going to go talk to your community, just a couple of my, my points as, you know, this is stuff that I do on a daily basis, but I, I can't emphasize enough, I don't want to give up, even if we sell the land, we can put conditions on how we want to see walking trails and protection of some of the wetlands and enhancing it so that, you know, you've got the Natoma Space and Habitat Conservancy, I'm sure they'll, they'll give some, some opinions on, on how to, you know, maximize that space to enhance wildlife and walking trails. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. There are a lot of things that my sister on the dais and I have in common, and one of them is that we talk really fast when we're excited about things. So I want to talk a little bit to vision, because, I mean, you have so many brilliant people working on this with you. You have residents from your community, you have school staff, you have the city staff, you have consultants, you have stakeholders in the community. So I trust that whatever details you all work out are going to be what works best for South Sacramento. And so I want to speak about the vision that led you, because you championing this, I mean, you found this, you brought this to city staff and said, hey, we should do this. And I know a lot of folks see tension here between the fact that this was brought up during the siting plan discussion for homelessness and what we're talking about today. And I want to be very clear that this, to me, is what moving upstream looks like. When we talked about our All-In Sacramento Plan just a couple weeks ago, we talked about how we're out of balance. We're spending so much money on triage and temporary shelter that we're failing to prevent people from becoming homeless, who are losing their housing faster than we can get them off the street. And we're failing to sufficiently invest in the things that they need to get off the street, which is both affordable housing and it's economic opportunity. And that's, I say that because that's exactly what you've managed somehow to weave in to one project, 102 acres. Sounds huge, but it's not. And, you know, to provide a real economic engine for South Sacramento, something like a youth sports complex, which is so brilliant, because it's meeting a need that the community has, and it's going to provide so many scalable job opportunities. You know, everything from the very high up, you know, like, executive management, to the folks who are going to serve popcorn and sodas and other things when the events are actually happening. And so you're, you're looking at your neighborhood and your part of this puzzle, and you've identified something that will allow us to move upstream. And to not just triage the crisis, but actually imagine a future where the crisis is better, because we've provided the economic tools for someone to make more money, so they aren't at risk of homeless, as well as the housing that we need, so that people actually have the opportunity to access housing that they can afford. So I just want to name that as the broad picture here. I don't see this as different from our conversation, the siting plan at all. I see this as visionary. And I needed to say that, because you're about to embark now on the even more nitty-gritty. I think this is pretty nitty-gritty, but like, where we're going after this is much more nitty-gritty. And I think it's so important, and what staff is asking for is, what's the vision here? What do you think? I mean, I think you're 1,000% on the right track. I think any of these scenarios would be brilliant for South Sac. I think what you all figure out in terms of partnerships and what works for you is going to be the best option and the best steward of the land for us. I will just say that part, part of what's so brilliant here, I remember when I first started doing housing advocacy, I sat down with Scott Syfax, and Scott Syfax said something to me that I'll never forget, where he's like, you can't build more land. You can't build more land. When the land is gone, the land is gone. It's in the market, you're never going to get it back. Maybe you can buy it back someday, but it's gone forever. And so by getting this piece of land for South Sacramento in the city's name, so that we could be stewards, so that we could develop this vision, was just, it was brilliant. And so I will say also that this is one of many reasons why I supported Measure N, which is counterintuitive for a downtown council member to do, because the money was all going downtown. And so you'd think I'd be like, yeah, let's keep it all down here, and just keep investing more and more into the convention center. But I firmly believe that we, as a city, are never going to reach our full potential until every single neighborhood reaches its full potential. And that's what makes me so excited about this, is you're aiming for those rafters, you're aiming for that goal. You're not just doing what would be easy or quick, but you're imagining something bigger, and you've put in place the policies and the mechanisms and the funding to make it possible. So I say all of that as slowly as I can, for someone who also speaks fast like you, just to say how proud I am of the work that you and your advisory committee and the city team have done to get us to this point, how excited I am to see where you move from here, and that this is what homelessness work should look like too. This is also what this looks like. And, and we have to be able to have both conversations, you have to be able to do both things, and we haven't as a city. And so I'm excited about this project for this reason. And, yeah, want to thank you again, Councilmember Vang. And Mayor, I know you've been a big partner in this work as well, for all you've done to get us to this point, and just encourage you to keep going on this path, which is the direction you've been looking for. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm a proud member of the Fast Speakers Club. I will, I'll try to keep my comments a little wordish and brief. But, you know, I, I honestly was, was welling up, hearing you talk, like, hearing, hearing Councilmember Vang's passion. And one of the things that one of the speakers said that sticks with me is, Ms. Mack said, "Design with us." And I think that that's really important, because that's exactly what you've been doing since the moment that this even came into fruition. And I wasn't on the council at that time, I wasn't a part of the council during the beginning discussion, so I hear from, from some people that there were conversations around homelessness, and I, and I really appreciate Councilmember Valenzuela's comments of, it's not just all about, if all we focus on is sheltering, we're never actually going to address the, the root causes and the things that actually get people out of homelessness and prevent people from becoming homeless. And so that means having, you know, permanent supportive housing, that means having the right interventions for people, that means supporting our youth, right? Like, something as simple as that early on can really help people from becoming into, are getting into a position later on in life where they become homeless. And we have to think about all of these things together, and I really appreciate your, your vision on this. And especially that all of the, the community work, you did that on your own, like, with the support of the team, but you said, hey, we're going to listen to everyone, we're going to have focus groups, we're going to make sure that we're hearing everybody's opinions before we move forward. That's pretty unique and innovative in terms of what government has done in these spaces. I'd be really hard-pressed to find another example like that, in any local or state or other government. And so I think that intentional outreach and, and community connection is so important, because, you know, South Sac has been left behind in a lot of cases. And there's a lot of neighborhoods that deserve to have the kind of activities and amenities that other neighborhoods in the city have. And that's going to take, that, that took part of the leadership on, on, on you all on for the TOT reform, and now we have to put that into action. And so I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to see what happens next with your leadership. And I'm also really interested, I think one of the options is, you know, if we move forward and do the sports complex piece, like, looking at different options as it relates to private partnerships. And so that's something I certainly would love to, to see that as a part of a future analysis, is, you know, what, what will it take if we all work together, public and private, to create something that, yes, you know, if the city did everything ourselves, yes, that would put us in the red, but is there some combination of partnership that could put us in the green? And could also, you know, all the intangible things that, that it's not about money, it's not about how much money's in the budget, it's about the health and wellness of our communities and our young people. And so just really wanted to say that, say that, say thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, or, sorry, Councilmember Vang. Sorry, I was thinking of Valenzuela, for all of your leadership on this issue before I came on, and happy to support you now as we move forward.
Excellent. Mayor Protam Telamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. And I've gone to Davis to watch my nephew's soccer game, I've gone to Woodland to watch my niece's soccer game, so I've traveled around Sacramento just to go watch games. And I'm like, hey, these are dollars that I'm spending at the local business, eating in between games, and the parking revenue and everything else that comes with it. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the idea, and your vision and your community outreach to the residents has been so impressive. And you've been very honest and upfront with the community about what you expect and, you know, your feelings towards it, whether it's like affordable housing, sports complex. You've been very honest and transparent. But I do want to say that when the city council at that time, we're a brand-new council now, a lot of us, the city council at that time did mention homelessness, you know, homeless housing. And so that's something that I think that taxpayers are worried about, they feel like we're going back on our promise to, from that council meeting to today, like, hey, it was going to be this, now it's going to be this. So it's just something to be mindful, and I'm hoping Mayor's comments will probably help address some of my concerns right now, because that's just, that's how it came off to the general public. And so this meeting is important so that we can kind of clarify that. And Councilmember Vang, thank you so much for your comments at the very beginning. So.
Thank you. Thank you for teeing me up there, Mayor Protam. So, you know, we never want to live with regrets, and I don't have many, including my decision to step aside after two terms, but if I have one regret, it's that I'm not going to be here to see this project actually come to fruition under the leadership of Councilmember Vang. Because this is what it's all about. I mean, if I'm going to sum it up, what is building a big, a new big city all about? It's about economic growth, and it's about inclusion, and it is about neighborhood empowerment. It is making sure that, as other members have said, that every part of this city is paid attention to, especially those parts of the city that have been too often ignored, and where we have allowed historic and, and beautiful parts of the city to go without. And there's a lot of reasons for that, some of it intentional, our own history, our own history of redlining and of outright discrimination. And so if we're going to be true to our word and to our oath, then we need to always be about trying to change that. And yes, focusing resources, more of our resources in areas that, that not only need, but deserve an economic boost. And we talk a lot about services, and I'm all for services, Mental Health, Mental Health Services Act, all of it. But you know, there's something much more powerful than services, and that is opportunity, and economic opportunity, and high-wage jobs. And so I stand four-square behind Councilmember Vang's idea that South Sacramento, and North Sacramento, by the way, it's not exclusive, I see the Jeffersons there, that South Sacramento deserves an economic catalyst that is big, and we ought to be thinking big here. I want to recount a little bit of the history here, responding to Mayor Protam Telamontes, but also this whole, there were a lot of pieces, this is one of these confluence of events that leads us potentially to a very special place if we do it right. So I don't remember the exact timing, but there were several things. First of all, Mike Testa and, and Sonia Bradley and, and their Visit Sacramento team, separate and apart from the 102 acres, commissioned a study several years ago that concluded that Sacramento's missing piece of its tourism vision is youth sports. And it is so stereotypical and so true when you talk to Sacramento families and parents about their children playing in competitive youth sports, that they're traveling to every other city in this state, including in the Central Valley, it could be Galt, it could be Manteca, it could be Woodland, it could be, and we're Sacramento, the capital city, and we're building this, trying to build this modern, dynamic, inclusive economy, and we don't have it here. So that was one piece of it. The other piece of it was Councilmember Vang's noticing in a, I think in a newspaper, that the 102 acres was forbid. And working with the city manager, who think in a newspaper, that the 102 acres was forbid. And working with the city manager, who, and I was involved a little bit in this, I was your, I was your wingman here, both of you, but you two really carried the ball here. And the city manager, I want to give him some real credit here, because this is not sort of a traditional role of a city, to purchase surplus land for $12 million. And yet he had enough foresight and vision, because he could have said no right away. We weren't going to, like, bring this to the city council. He could have said no right away, and we wouldn't be there. But he had the foresight to see that if we land bank in an area of the city where there is a need for an economic catalyst, that great things could happen. So that was the second thing. So I thank the two of you for partnering in the way that you did to get us there. And then the city attorney wisely advised us that all these great ideas we had, whether it be the waterfront, whether it be regional youth sports facility, that, timeout, you may have great vision, and John Colver, our great treasurer, may tell us that we've got a lot of money from the TOT debt capacity, which we do, to be able to invest in economic development, but you could not spend it on anything other than the convention center and/or adjoining theaters. And maybe you can get around it in some ways, but it was going to be tortured and pretty convoluted. Because that ordinance was written in 1965, and it was intended to use the TOT for just that, downtown convention center and theater. So when I saw what Councilmember Vang was doing, and remembered Mike Testa and Visit Sacramento's work in terms of saying, "Hey, it's right in front of you. You want to build this great tourism economy? You're doing really well on sports. You're doing really well on art, culture, and entertainment and festivals, but you're not doing so well, we're not doing at all on regional youth sports." And having a facility that allows us to draw in lots of hotel nights, but also serve as a place for Sacramento families to be able to, to be able to have their children, our children, play closer to home. And so we passed Measure N. And when we passed Measure N, we talked about two things. We talked about the waterfront, and we talked about the regional youth sports facility. That's what we campaigned on in, in 2022. Now, when we bought the 102 acres, it's true, Mayor Protam Telamontes, that there were a lot of things discussed, including the potential of using the site for at least temporary homeless services, safe parking, for example. And what you heard here tonight is that it doesn't have to necessarily be either-or, that in the shorter to medium term, depending upon having more money, because we're, we're spending $22 million from our city's general fund on homelessness, and we are working aggressively to try to draw down even more state money for homelessness. But unless and until we get that money, we're not expanding beyond the 1,350 beds that we, that we operate and are contract every single night. If we do get more money, what the city manager told us, he did the analysis, the 102 acres is eligible, although the staff report tells that it would take 10 to 11 million dollars to grade it in an appropriate way, even for temporary homeless use, maybe less. And that their independent analysis said that other sites come higher on the list. But we also said at the time, because I know I said it, is that this 102 acres, in the medium to long term, needs to be for an economic driver for South Sacramento. So where does that leave us here today in looking at the report? Which again, was a very good report and very good presentation, but it could be read out of context. And so I want to sort of give it my context, because it is true that if we build a sports, if we build a series of sports fields and an indoor sport, indoor sports facility on our dime, like another convention, like another community center, that's a lot of money? We are going to, we'd have to pay for it, it's tens of millions of dollars? Okay. That's not what the vision is. 2A is something very different. And I like 2A, by the way. It's to build housing, absolutely. And it is to engage the private sector, just as you said, Ms. Riddell, to engage the private sector, to see if we might do a traditional public-private partnership and build not just a modest, but a big and real indoor-outdoor regional youth sports facility. Which, by the way, would not have to be limited just to the 102 acres, because there might be other places in South Sacramento, or in other parts of the city where, where we'd want to add to our tourism, our regional sports tourism amenities. But that's the idea here. And so we're not doing all this on our dime, although we do have this TOT money. Now, I was admonished by my team not to talk too much about that tonight, which I'm not going to, because the truth of the matter is, I'm not going to be here for the future council decisions, how to spend that TOT money. I'm going to come back to you this summer, as I said in my State of the Downtown speech, to talk about the waterfront, because that we can get done. And that's only a portion of the money, by the way. But it's going to be up to the future council to say, "Okay, this is the vision. Here are the resources. Here's the private sector partner we have." And, and it will, has to be available for the kids and the young people in South Sacramento, but it also has to be an economic driver. And Mike Testa will hold us to account there, because it has to bring in tournaments and all, from across the region, the state, and the nation. And by the way, if you do an indoor and outdoor facilities, you're, just use your imagination. Somebody said to me, "Maybe we should be the center of youth gymnastics." Okay, I don't know. Maybe that's indoor. I've heard about bike, all kinds of biking events. There's obviously basketball, volleyball, pickleball, squash, everything in the world. There's soccer, there's softball, there's ice. So imagine it. Imagine it. Go big. Future council, put some real public money out there, which you can now under Measure N, get the right private sector partner, and that deficit number, by the way, that you have under 2A and B will go away, because it's intended to be a profit-making operation that benefits the community. So we can't do all this in the next number of months. I started out by saying, by asking the question, "Are you sure this can't get all built by December?" And I was joking, of course, because I actually thought, when we started this two years ago, that maybe we would be breaking ground by the time I left. It's not happening. It's a five-to-six-year deal. There's a lot of, but don't lose this vision. This is everything. This is everything. And it's also consistent with what the community wants, because Councilmember Vang's community work, you know, there are some disagreements, and people might describe it differently, but it's, it comes down to the same thing. This is what they want, together with more housing, and more retail, more mixed use. And so you can deliver something historic and great for this community, for our city, and for our region, if we use this public resource, we plan it in the right way, engage the private sector. I think the next step, frankly, ought to be an RF, what do you call it, request for qualifications, request for something, to the private sector, see what the interest is, get them in, and, and start going on actually translating this vision into something real, that then, next year, the year after, under Councilmember Vang's leadership, new mayor and council, that you can then take all the necessary steps to get us to where this becomes a reality for the people of our community. Sorry I went long, but I thought that the history was important, and how all these pieces actually fit together. This is, I cannot think of much that is more important than following through on, on this vision. Thanks. Okay. All right. Next item. I think that's it. Do you want to close this off? Mi, go ahead.
Yeah, it is receive and file. And what we're going to do is, yes, we have this publicly during city council, but the goal is to also meet the community where they're at, and go back to the community to share, actually, the highlights of the opportunity constraint analysis, and then begin conversation. But I want to make sure we go back to the 102 acres advisory committee, because they're really my eyes and ears on the ground. They're going to help me co-create the agenda, and how we should do this, so that we can be intentional about the outreach, and gather the information we need, so that this council can make the next direction on what we want to do with this piece of property. Because there's going to be different options on the table, but we want to make sure it's informed and guided by the community. So that's what is going to happen next. And just stay tuned. We'll make sure to send information out for upcoming meetings. Thank you so much.
Let's move to the last item of the evening, and that is the community survey that the state, excuse me, the city auditor led on. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Farish Tharari, the interim city auditor. With me today is Jordan Sweeney, who is primarily responsible for overseeing the consultants on this project. The item that we're looking at is the 2023 results of our 2023 community survey, which we conducted in late 2023. So this is our fifth year conducting this survey. We sent out a random sample of 75 surveys, 7,500 surveys to households from across the city. And this is an increase from 2022 survey, where we had sent out 7,000 surveys. Similar to previous year's surveys, we oversampled in some of our districts due to historically low response rates. So those were districts two, three, five, and eight. As in previous years, there were two groups of survey respondents. Those were that randomly selected to participate in the 7,500. Those are statistically valid survey results, and we call these a representative sample. And then there's a group of survey respondents that were not randomly selected, but they decide to take the survey on their own, and we call those the open participation group. So the representative sample survey was administered from October 5, 2023, to November 30, 2023. So that was about eight weeks. And we received 790 survey responses to the representative sample. This was statistically significant, with a 95% confidence interval and a margin of error of plus or minus 3.5%. The open participation survey was available from November 2, 2023, to November 30, 2023, which was about four weeks. For the open participation survey, we received 1,093 responses. And those results are analyzed separately in the report and on the interactive dashboard that we have online. The link to the dashboard is on, on this slide, and it's also posted on our city's website, city auditor's website. For the rest of the presentation, I'm going to focus on the results of the representative sample, but the open participation results are generally similar. So I'm going to try to condense 350 pages of survey results in 10 minutes. So let me know if I'm going too fast. As a reminder, the community survey captures residents' opinions considering 10 central facets of a community. So that's mobility, community design, inclusivity and engagement, health and wellness, economy, utilities, parks and recreation, natural environment, and education, arts, and culture. Oh, sorry, and safety. So similar to last year's survey, safety, economy, and mobility were rated as high in importance and low in quality. Ideally, the facets that are rated high in importance to the community would also be rated higher in quality. And for example, utilities and natural environment were rated as both high in importance and high in quality. This quality-importance matrix can highlight areas that the city may want to consider as potential areas for improvement. So as I mentioned, the report highlights three areas that were noteworthy, mobility. So while the ratings within this facet were similar to comparison communities, and they remained in line with 2022 evaluations, the low overall quality and high-important scores could suggest interest in additional focus on mobility issues. For safety, while overall safety remains a challenge, ratings for safety services improved in some areas. So for example, emergency preparedness experienced an 11% improvement, ambulance or emergency medical service experienced a 9% improvement, fire prevention and education experienced a 6% improvement. And lastly, affordable housing was also important. About 85% of respondents rated that affordable housing or homeless supportive services and community-based mental health and wellness were both high or medium in priority. So the next several slides provide trend information for questions asked in the survey about the different facets of the community. The percentages reported in these slides, there are percentage of respondents that rated each question positively, so excellent or good, in most cases. The arrows above the 2023 responses represent how the city compares to the benchmark cities with populations of 400,000 people or more that have taken the survey in the past five years. With the cities, when the city's response is within 10 percentage points of the benchmark cities, it'll show a represented, sorry, a similar arrow, which is represented by horizontal arrows. And then when it is more than 10 percentage points difference, it will have either an up or down arrow on the 2023 results. The city's results were generally similar or lower than the benchmark cities. There is only one question in the mobility facet that I'll cover, where the city scored more than 10 percentage points higher than the benchmark cities. As shown on this chart, positive responses to questions about the city's quality of life have generally been trending down since we started conducting the community survey in 2018. 56% of respondents rated the overall quality of life in Sacramento as excellent or good, and 63% of respondents rated Sacramento as a place to live positively. With regards to governance, the overall customer service by Sacramento employees has been trending up, and 56% of respondents rated it as excellent or good, which is similar to the benchmark cities. Alternatively, the overall direction that Sacramento is taking has been trending down, and 33% of respondents rated it as excellent or good in 2023. However, it's still similar to the benchmark cities. Moving to economy, the overall economic health of the city, the vibrancy of the city's downtown commercial area, and shopping opportunities have been trending downwards. And costs of living remained at a similar level to 2022, as well as the benchmark cities. Taking a look at mobility, all of Sacramento's evaluations rated similar or higher than the benchmark cities. However, the overall quality of the transportation system has been trending down, and 29% of respondents rated that the overall quality of the transportation system was excellent or good. Here's where we see Sacramento rated higher than the benchmark cities, with 62% of respondents stating that they carpooled with other adults or children instead of driving alone within the last 12 months. Additionally, use of public transportation instead of driving has surpassed pre-pandemic levels, with 37% of respondents stating that they used public transportation instead of driving within the last 12 months, which is similar to the benchmark cities. Ease of walking, however, has been trending down. 43% of respondents rated ease of walking as excellent or good, and it's still similar to the benchmark cities. In relation to community design, many evaluations remain similar to last year's survey. For example, 46% of respondents rated the overall design or layout of residential and commercial areas as excellent or good. And again, it's similar to the benchmark cities. All evaluations related to utilities increased over last year's survey, with all evaluations rating similar to the benchmark cities. For example, 59% of respondents rated the overall quality of the utility infrastructure as excellent or good. As highlighted earlier, overall safety remains a challenge. Rates for safety services improved in some areas, as I mentioned, including emergency preparedness, ambulance or emergency medical services, and fire prevention, and education. Looking at the natural environment, many evaluations saw increases from last year's survey. survey. For example, yard waste pickup experienced a 15% increase, with 74% of respondents rating these services as excellent or good, which is also similar to the benchmark cities. However, cleanliness has been trending down since 2018. We saw 21% of respondents rating cleanliness as excellent or good, and it's lower than the benchmark cities. Many evaluations in parks and recreation experienced small increases from last year's survey. However, almost half of evaluations compared lower than the benchmark cities. For example, fitness opportunities has been trending down, with 51% of respondents rating fitness opportunities as excellent or good, which is lower than the benchmark cities. While 52% of respondents rated their overall health as excellent or good, overall health and wellness opportunities compared lower than the benchmark cities. And then availability of affordable quality food and availability of preventative health services has also been trending down. 41% of the respondents rated both of these items as excellent or good, and that's similar to the benchmark cities. All evaluations in the education, arts, and culture facet remain similar to the benchmark cities. While availability of affordable quality childcare and preschool and K-12 education have been trending down, opportunities to attend special events and festivals has been trending upwards. Then looking at inclusivity and engagement, all but two items rated similar to the benchmark cities. Sacramento is a place to raise children, and taking care of vulnerable residents both rated lower than the benchmark cities. However, valuing and respecting residents from diverse backgrounds has been trending up, with 59% of respondents rating this as excellent or good, and that's similar to the benchmark cities again. So in addition to the standard questions, we have asked some custom questions to get feedback on residents' priorities for Measure You spending. So these questions are the same as the ones we had in our last year's survey. Based on the respondents' feedback, the top two priorities for Measure You spending is affordable housing and homeless supportive services and community-based mental health and wellness. And then this slide is just a continuation of the priority ratings for other Measure You services, so these were rated lower than the ones on the previous slide. So as I mentioned, there is an interactive dashboard posted on our website that allows users to analyze each of the survey questions by different respondent characteristics, such as council district, age, sex, and all the other ones that are listed up there. So this concludes my presentation and available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no speakers on this item.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll hand it over to council members for comments and questions. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Thank you, Farish. I know we generally follow what other cities do. It's great to be able to compare ourselves. I just wanted to make one comment on the Measure You questions. I believe the committee has raised this in past years, that when we ask about public safety services, that question includes police, fire, emergency medical services, citywide emergency management, and youth-centered prevention services, which is like five very distinct functions of our cities. So I know they've asked in the past if we could break that out a little bit more because someone may be checking that box for any of those reasons, and it's hard to know exactly why they checked that box or what service they were more interested in. So that's just an observation maybe for future years. I think we might have raised this in the past, but just wanted to make sure that for next year's community survey, it was a little bit more specific on that one question. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, and last, when we came up with these questions, we worked really closely with the Measure You committee to come up with that, and last year again, we worked with them again and asked them if there was any updates, but they didn't come back with.
Okay. I think I remember the conversation. Maybe it just got lost in the committee, but yeah, I would love to see that disaggregated in the future so we could, I mean, because that's, yeah, five very distinct buckets of things, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Farish. I think this is, you know, a report, while 379 pages, and just a small snapshot of respondents of the city of Sacramento. I think it's really important to dig in because this is also our residents saying how they feel and then trending. And as I go through and I look at similar cities, we're trending similar and lower. Only in a couple places are we trending higher. I mean, it really is sad when 29% of respondents believe the direction Sacramento is taking is poor and only 38% believe it's fair. And 37% of respondents have a poor overall confidence in our Sacramento government. 34% of respondents rated Sacramento being open and transparent as poor. So, you know, as elected officials, I think it's really important, like, we should read this and see how, how can we as leaders in this community represent being open and being transparent and being as honest as possible? I know there is no way we will reach everybody, but when it is a small snapshot, we start seeing a suffragant amount that says, we don't trust you, we don't trust what you say, and we don't believe you're open and transparent. Like, we have to stop and take a look in what can we reflect as ourselves as council members and as leadership, you know, do differently. I believe it is our duty to do that. You know, when you go through and you look at where does our community want, they want safety. They want us to focus on safety. They want to focus on cleaning up Sacramento and feeling like it's a place you want to, you know, raise your family and your kids. You know, just for me, one of the things I looked at, you know, when you can break it down, which I appreciate, on District One, only 14% of the respondents rate the eat of travel by public transportation as excellent or good in District One, which then goes to we only have two RT bus routes. 21% of my respondents in D1 rate the quality of transportation as good or excellent. So, you know, I am going to use my position on Sacramento RT. I am fully behind Stockton Boulevard and the rapid bus transit and saying Natomas, you know, to the airport needs it next because North Natomas, it takes us 45 minutes to get downtown, 10 minutes of driving. We talk about climate action and climate change. We need to get people out of their cars. We have to change that. So for me, I think this is just hones in further what we know in Sacramento, what I know about my district, but I think it's important when our community tells us, you know, how they believe that we should respond. So thank you for this. It is something that I have pored over, and I know we'll see it every year, and I hope to continue seeing it every year. So thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Interim City Auditor, I just really want to thank you for all your work on this and your team as well. I think a lot of work goes into this, and it's really important, as Councilmember Kaplan mentioned, that we are hearing from constituents and we understand what's most important, where are the challenges that we're seeing, because we can't be everywhere. We certainly can use this data to help guide our policymaking decisions and guide what we're doing internally in terms of city staff. One of the things that I found, you know, reviewing some of the District Five specific information was, you know, we disproportionately rated poor on overall feeling of safety, something you mentioned, sidewalk maintenance and safety from property crime as three areas. So that was really, while that is very much in line with what I've heard from residents, it's really good for me to be able to see that so that I know that I'm aligning the things that I'm pushing for and fighting for on this council with the needs of the community and the desires that they have, and so appreciate that work. And I just had one thing to point out. We do have what we call a District Five Community Cabinet, so it's a cabinet of people from all over the district, that small business owners, faith leaders, nonprofit founders and others. And so when I sent this to them, one of the pieces of feedback I got back is that I think the only two options on there were to own or rent when asked about your living situation, and they pointed out that we should have other options for folks, including those who are unhoused, so that we're really accurately capturing where, what people's living situations are as a part of that data set. So I'd love to have that be a piece of direction for you moving forward for the future community survey. And I see that Councilmember Tao has punched up, so I'd like to turn it over to you, Councilmember Tao.
Yeah, thank you, the city auditor, for this report. You know, I think this is very, and thank you for taking a larger sample from my district. You know, a lot of time, I believe, a lot of, there is a lack of engagement in our district, and thank you for going out there and getting the engagement that's needed. You know, just looking at this data, I would encourage our residents to look at it too because it is very reflective of what our residents is feeling. You know, if you look at the overall quality of life for District Two, we feel, you know, it's only 38%. It's the lowest out of all eight districts, you know, and so we are filling it with homelessness on a bike trail, with, you know, just junk and debris in our alleyways, illegal dumping, and so, you know, I, you know, something that from the city standpoint, maybe, you know, these are some things that we definitely need to focus on more in our district so that we can improve the quality of life for our residents of District Two.
Great comments. Thank you, council member. All right, seeing no other comments. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, I think we'll take public comment on matters not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. I have 20 speakers for matters not on the agenda. I'll call off a few, and you can line up in the aisle. Kai On, Julius, Guy Stevenson, then Ryan Misano. Is Kai here? I do not see him. Julius, Guy Stevenson, then Ryan Misano.
And quickly, while we're waiting for folks to line up to speak, I just want to remind members of the audience that we do encourage everybody to follow the rules. Please do not speak over time. Do not shout from the audience. Please respect everybody who's speaking. Otherwise, we'll be forced to issue warnings and/or clear the chamber. So I just ask that please everyone respect one another and allow everyone else the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. Hope you guys are doing well. I wanted to know if we, the people, can have an extra minute to speak. I think two minutes is not enough time to get out what we really want to get out with any issues that we have. I would like to maybe, I know there used to be a time where it was like five minutes, and I would like to see if we can maybe get at least three, if that's possible, just so we can kind of get out a little bit more, so you guys can hear our concerns. Also, too, when we're doing these public testimonies, I noticed that when I watch it back on YouTube, we're always like in this little square box, and like you see this up on the screen, but you don't really see us. Now, I'd love to share the content out, you know, on social media so people can know what's going on in Sacramento, but it seems like we're always kind of like minimized down to like a little square box. Is it possible we can maybe get like a full screen of us? So that way, we can maybe share that on other social media platforms, if that's possible. Also, too, I don't know who I should talk to about this, but I have like a huge concern when it comes to abortion in Sacramento and in California, across America, but who would I talk to about trying to propose to fix that situation? Is anybody I can talk to specifically about that, or? No? No answers? None?
I just wanted to mind, so we don't go back and forth in the audience during this time, this is a time to hear from you.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just wanted to know if anyone, there is, but that's what I want to do. But yeah, my biggest concern basically is just us getting the extra time to talk more and to maximize us on the screen so that we can be able to share this content on other social media platforms. Thank you.
Next speaker is Guy Stevenson.
I'm a 27-year Marine, and your dream is a dream for right now. For the, it ain't going to happen in the next six years or eight years. It's a good dream, though, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but this is what I am worried about. I'm worried about people in the city of Sacramento that live outside and end up over there on Broadway, and I'm sure you know what Broadway is. It's a coroner's office. Because these people have substance problems, they have drug problems. I'm not saying anything against what you want to happen, but what I am saying is that property could be utilized. I've went to four funerals that are vets that have served their country and went to Iraq when I went to Iraq, and these are brothers and sisters that were right next to me, saving my rear end. Just to have them come up and be over here and be on the street, you know what I mean? That's just nonsense to me. I love my people in Sacramento, and I love the city of Sacramento, but there needs to be more on helping people. Get them off the street, get them well, make them feel happy. But I see the way some people treat these homeless people, and it's not cool. You people need to think about your future around here. These people might be your next-door neighbors at one time. And the sports complex, it's nice, but it's not anytime soon. You're talking several years, because you got to come up with the money, and you guys got a deficit of what, $53 million? Think realistically, that's the only thing I'm going to say. I'm not going to badmouth you. Just help the people in Sacramento and get these, these normal people, these vets, off the street.
Thank you for your comments. Brian Misano, then Charles Fost, then Rebecca Sandoval.
Good evening. Brian Misano of misanonews.com. 2,000 years ago, a man denounced the religious rulers of his day, rebuking their greedy, money-loving stealing from the common man. This man has had the greatest positive impact on humanity of any man in history. It's greater than all the kings, queens, generals, and rulers combined. What happened to the innocent truth teller? He was lied about, he was slandered as a traitor, and he was crucified by my people, who were deceived into thinking he was guilty of treason. Well, the same group of people behind this are still stealing from people, lying to people, and deceiving people. If Jesus is Paul and the apostles walked there today, what would they be saying? John, Chapter Eight, Verse 44. "You're of your father, the devil, and the lusts of your father he will do. He was a murderer from the beginning and abode not in the truth, because there is no truth in him. When he speaketh the lie, he speaketh of his own, for he is a liar and the father of it." And what lies would be being told about Jesus and the apostles today? They would be called racists, anti-Semites, Nazis, bigots, sexist, homophobes, Islamophobes, transphobes, haters, and every other name in the satanic cultural Marxist playbook. You and your allies in the audience, who are either deceived or paid, simply hate the truth. This city council is made up of puppets. Every one of you up there is not there because of merit. You are there because you are corrupt and ignorant. The conflict that is going on is simply a war between good and evil. When I first decided to attend Sacramento about a year ago, I did it because it was the capital city of the most populous state of the most powerful nation on earth. The truth has nothing to fear, and all you have done is interrupt meetings, send your thugs after us, and use your depraved newspapers, radio, and television to lie about us. You fear corrupt men more than you fear God, and you will reap what you sow.
Thank you for your comments. Charles Fost, then Rebecca Sandoval.
Looking for the timer. Okay, there you go. I think the 102 acres off of Medeville was never really a good idea for homeless services or shelter anyway. I think it was too close to the community center and a school for it to be used for homeless services and shelter was kind of always a strange concept. There are other options, though. There is, in your district, there is about a 40-acre area that could be used, and within six months, we could probably have 300 to 500 people there and access to mental health, dental, and physical health services within a short period of time. If you're interested in that, contact me about it. It's something I've been working on for a while. We kind of, as an organization, hope for Sacramento put off because we're looking at other options, but this is a good option in your area. So if you're interested, call me. Also, permanent supportive housing, there, sorry, I put a lot of work into looking for locations for homeless stuff, and I have a lot of conversations about it. There are stuff that I've had conversations with in the past about permanent support, about homelessness that couldn't be used for homelessness, but people were open for it to be permanent supportive housing. So that's something you're interested in. I have a few locations that could only be used for permanent supportive housing. So contact me if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rebecca Sandoval, and then Michael Baker.
Good evening. In a representative democracy, the public elects officials to act in their interests. Elected officials make important decisions on behalf of the public, including how to spend taxpayer and other public monies on infrastructure and services. In July 2022, the city council adopted the Northgate Boulevard Economic Recovery Plan, which allocated $560,350 for nonprofit support. Joey's Food Locker received $17,500. I question why they receive these funds, as they are several miles from Northgate Boulevard. Of greater concern is of the $563,350. Of greater concern is of the five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, Joshua House received four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred dollars. This left ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty for actual Northgate Boulevard Economic Recovery. As you heard time and time again from Twin Rivers Unified School District, they offered several lots and buildings to Joshua House at no cost, in hopes the hospice program would not be placed three yards from Garden Valley Elementary School. You've received concerns from the district and affected Garden Valley community, and those concerns fall on deaf ears. Upon learning of the city's gift of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred dollars to Joshua House as part of the recovery plan, it is now clear why Joshua House declined any offers from the district. Upon reviewing the recovery plan, we learned that Joshua House will not begin operating until spring of twenty-twenty-five. This is in spite of the fact the city held a groundbreaking over twenty-two months ago. To date, all that has occurred is dirt has been moved around the lot, the lot. The district sent a letter in January, the city council has not received any response to date.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Michael Baker, then Mary Tappel, then Robert Copeland.
First of all, thank you Vice Mayor Maples for bringing the feet-first connection to Oakdale Elementary. That has done wonders for our kids at that elementary school. So, thank you for making that connection with us. Just to piggyback on Trustee Sandoval, I grew up along Northgate Boulevard. The amount of money that was spent for the Northgate Economic Development and given to Joshua's house is completely unacceptable. That street is crumbling, the lights are out, the walls, everything. We need more support. Also, too, we are now receiving emails as the Board of Trustees. I have two of my colleagues sitting behind me about resources that are needed for District Two. The homelessness on the bike path are now influencing, are having influence on how our kids get to school. Our kids are harassed daily getting to school. They're fearful for getting to school, and the lack of leadership by the city council is now prohibiting kids from getting their proper education. Please make sure that we're getting some help to Area Two and help with that, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Tappel.
I see the Councilwoman Talamantes, Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. The city manager stepped out, so maybe Mr. Jasso. Can you please connect with the two trustees from Twin Rivers School District? They did send a letter to all of the Sacramento City Council, including all our charter officers, and they deserve the respect to make sure they get a response from the city of Sacramento. So, can you please connect with them, so that we can figure out what communication will look like?
Thank you, Mr. Assistant City Manager. Appreciate you. And thank you trustees for speaking.
Can I speak now? Sorry, I don't want to speak out of place.
Proceed, Mary.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. I guess you're Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here to speak again about the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail. It needs much more help. We so appreciate the mowing and the cleanup that has been done, but the use of motor vehicles on the trail, including very large ones, very threatening ones, I had to hop on, I was on the bicycle on the trail some months ago last year, and a big hog motorcycle was coming up behind me, so I was safe, because I have a good balance, even though I was then sixty-nine, now I'm seventy. I could go off the paved trail, onto the rough gravel, even at a downward slant, and keep my balance, but a whole lot of people could not have done that. Totally unsafe for kids and for most older people, differently-able people, and it's unreal and unsafe for all citizens, no matter what their condition of health, or, because they all deserve the bike trail to be in good shape, their own resource. It's supposed to be a good rails-to-trails program, providing for the community transportation and a nice recreation, healthy, healthy exercise, but it, there are too many vehicles on it, so the only way to keep the vehicles off, I feel, is to have a daytime camping ban along the entire bike trail. And this would be successfully implemented if it was started with a priority on those who have motor vehicles right at their campsite, they are doing businesses, a lot of them illegal, bicycle shop shops and selling drugs along the bike trail, using that also to attract more people and vehicles as customers, suppliers, I don't know, or just visitors. It completely blocks the trail, and we need to have a daytime camping ban along the North Sacramento Bike Trail to give it back to its approved purpose.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland. Robert Copeland, then Angela Miles, then Rachel Wilkinson.
I think Mayor Steinberg and Eric Gere should be deducted in pay because they left early. City council has to be here for the entire meeting. We don't have to be here. So, where are they? I'm not going to get an answer to that. My main focus on the Justice for Renters Act, I'm going to advocate for that in Sacramento and the rest of California, which repeal a state law called Costa Hawkins, which limits rent control, and then I'm going to fight for rent control in Sacramento, which three of city council members didn't want. And I'm looking at one of them right now. My opinion is, city council is not going to fix the problems in Sacramento, according to that previous agenda. We're going to have to fix it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Angela Miles. Following Angela is Rachel Wilkinson, then Jackson Yoder.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the bike trail north of I-80. The bike trail, Brian Pedro sent people over to clean the bike trail, clean the bike trail. So, I take photos every single day. The bike trail looks exactly the same as yesterday and the day before. The bike trail is polluted with drugs, prostitution, drug use, needles. We still don't know if there's sex offenders out there. These people need to be moved for their safety and for our safety. It's unsafe. They drive on the bike trail, they live on the bike trail, they urinate, defecate on the bike trail, they have sex on the bike trail. There's prostitution on the bike trail. This needs to be addressed. It is unsafe. I continuously send email after email after email to all of you, all of you have emails from me, to everyone, to the police, to the city, to the city managers. No one is doing anything. We can't move them, we can't move them. It's neglect. You guys are neglecting to keep our community safe. Why? Why? Because there's poor people in our community? There's working people in our community, too, that pay taxes. You guys need to help us. Why do we have to beg, beg for help? This would, this would not ride in Miller Park, Lamb Park. Do they got to come out here and beg for your help? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rachel Wilkinson, then Jackson Yoder. So, Rachel, Jackson, then Sarah, and Alton Wood.
Hi, guys. I'm here to ask you tonight to please re-amend the ceasefire. I'm going to make a demonstration for you, okay? I do not wear my niqab because I'm ashamed of my face, to show my face when I come and talk to you guys, as some of the Zionists in here would like to say. I don't wear my hijab because I think I'm such an amazing Muslim, that I'm like so pure or whatever, and I don't dress modestly because I think my celibacy is dependent upon it. I dress this way because I'm scared. I'm literally scared, as a survivor of many, many sexual assaults. I'm ashamed, and I'm alone. I'm scared because politicians, government officials, Freemasons, my family, friends, teachers, pastors, my ex-husband, all can be labeled as white supremacist, neo-Nazis, Zionist, and all have assaulted me the way I described assault on Israeli Palestinian women by the Israeli to you guys two weeks ago. The first time I was gang raped, I was four years old. When these bad things would happen to me, I would dream of going to one place where people danced and sing and looked like me, and being able to go home was the only dream that kept me alive in those moments. It was the only thing that made me feel safe. Zionists didn't just steal my innocence, they destroyed my dream of safety. You may lie about us and cast your projections of your European sins onto us indigenous people, calling us savages, while you rape and murder and destroy our lands, but you cannot take our spirit from us. We will survive. You're knocking away with leaving the ceasefire unamended with those lies about Hamas. You will rewrite how many people Israel has killed. You will stop sympathizing with genocide. I'll see you all next week. Have a blessed night. Agueda.
Thank you for your comments. Jackson Yoder. Following Jackson Yoder is Sarah, then Alton Wood, then Monica Madrid.
I've been waiting for this for two months, to come back up here and speak to you guys like this. I didn't prepare anything ahead of time this time. I just wanted to look every single one of you in the eye and level with all of you guys, What you experienced a few weeks ago with that poor excuse for a ceasefire resolution is a hollow victory. And if you think for a single second that we are done, you could not be further from the truth. We are going to be here, hell or high water, every single Tuesday for the foreseeable future. We are going to keep attempting to amend your broken ceasefire resolution. We are going to advocate for divestment from institutions like Tagliat birthright, from friends of the IDF, which is openly donated to by institutions such as Benay Israel There are members of this council, both here and not here tonight, who have connections still to organizations that continue to fund the Israeli Defense Forces, who are committing this genocide openly. And I'm not sure if you know that, and if you want to have a longer conversation about it, we can do that, right? I'll see you guys next Tuesday, forever.
Thank you for your comments. Sarah is our next speaker, then Alton Wood. I have eight more speakers this afternoon, evening.
I don't know what's in your heart, but I do know how you voted, and on March nineteenth, this council overwhelmingly voted for an ugly and divisive resolution. And there is one thing I agree with the previous speakers on, it's definitely not over. One, the conflict in Israel continues. It's now the longest-running conflict that Israel has been involved in since nineteen forty-eight. And the next, and of course, you know, the next.
Just one second, please. Please do not call out from the audience. Thank you. Continue.
And I think maybe some of you might have voted for this resolution, thinking that it would be politically expedient. You know, you would vote for this, it would be done, you wouldn't have to think about this anymore, but I'm here to tell you, and I think other speakers have as well, that it's not done. So, what's next? Obviously, they want the resolution amended, but the boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement. So, two weeks, twenty, twenty days ago, three weeks ago, the UC Regents had their annual meeting, usually a pretty boring affair. I've never seen it hit the headlines in twenty years. However, the BDS movement showed up. Do you see this? Is it visible? It's not, it's not coming up as visible.
We, we're working on getting it on right now.
I should have, okay. The BDS movement came, and they erected this statue of a, I'll describe it, of a pig, it's upside down, of a pig, holding money bag. That would be the Zionist media, I guess, those flames over there, that's the flag of Israel. It's basically entirely composed of tropes and conspiracy theories about Jews. This is not a social justice movement. If that's not obvious to you now, it absolutely should be. It is motivated and animated by bigotry, hatred, antisemitism. It is un-American and anti-American at its core. And when you voted for that resolution, what you said to the Jewish community is, that wasn't a deal-breaker.
Thank you for your comments.
Please do not call out from the audience.
Thank you. Please, please leave. Thank you. Our next speaker is Alton Wood, Monica Madrid, Christine Jefferson, then Latoya Holm Screen.
Hello, members of the council. I'm Alton Wood. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I work at Sutter Center for Psychiatry. We, I'm here to speak for, up for the caregivers serving the patients at Sutter Center for Psychiatry here in Sacramento. We're standing up to Sutter. We are in the process of unionizing, and we have been working for the past two years to get collective bargaining to help, to do a couple of things, to address the fact that seventy percent of caregivers feel that their units are understaffed, that seventy-nine percent of caregivers report experiencing being understaffed daily or once a week, and that fifty-eight percent of caregivers have experienced unsafe situations due to work understaffing. We are providing service to the people in the community who need it the most, people with mental illness, who are having the worst day of their life, sometimes the worst, worst week of their lives, and sometimes the worst time in their life. And so, we are advocating that staff, number one, have proper staffing levels, and number two, that staff are compensated to be able to afford to live in this illustrious community. We, some of the members on the council joined us in a strike on December sixth of last year. Thank you so much for being there, Katie and Mai, thank you so much. And so, this is a formal invitation for our second strike. We notified the management on April the second that we would be striking on April the twenty-third to protest low pay and low staffing, and to help us to be able to provide a quality service to the people in the community who need it the most. You are all welcome to come to our strike on April twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, six-thirty in the morning till eleven-thirty in the afternoon. Please show up. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Monica Madrid, then Christine Jefferson.
Thank you, council members, for staying and listening to our comments. I'm here with the National Union of Healthcare Workers, and like Alton said, Sutter Center for Psychiatry is going on strike. And I'd like to first off thank Councilmember Talamantes, Councilmember Valenzuela, and Councilmember Vang for showing up to our previous strike, and Pickett and Councilmember Valenzuela for showing up to bargaining. Today, we went to bargaining, and management walked away. And they're refusing to, they want to make cuts to healthcare, and we're saying no. They want the patient care support specialists, who, last week, when I was there at Center, Sutter Center for Psychiatry at ten-thirty at night, there was a young PCS, Patient Care Support Specialist, who looked like he's probably straight out of college or in college still, and he was spooked out because he had to stop a young woman from committing suicide. The last time there was a strike, a suicide happened. We need the Sutter to come to the, back to the bargaining table and prevent this strike and get these workers a fair contract, which means better wages and higher benefits, because that's what these workers are fighting for. So, I'd hope to see you all at the picket line. And please call Daniel Peterson and tell, who's the CEO of Sutter Center for Psychiatry, and tell him to come back to the bargaining table and let's get a deal done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Christine Jefferson, then Latoya Holm Screen.
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the parkway. I think most of it has been said tonight. It's a big, junky mess. It's unhealthy, unsafe. I'm getting emails, just like my colleagues were saying, from parents, saying that they are scared for their children, their children are getting accosted on these bike trails by people. And I want to direct this to Howard Chan, because, Mr. Chan, you're supposed to be giving solutions to what we're supposed to be doing with the unhoused population. My question to you is, when are we going to take them off of your city property? When are we going to take them off of our parkway, so that our people that live there can use the, our parkway? I had a person come to our, our, our community association meeting, she was a mom, and she says, "I'm so afraid." She said, "I have to walk that trail." She said, "I'm afraid for my children." She said, "I walk with my elderly mother, and I'm scared for her." So, Mr. Chan, I need to know, when are we going to get some resolution on when we can look to see when there's going to, we're going to take those folks off our parkway. I don't know where you're going to put them, and I want them to be safe, and I want them to be, go somewhere, but the parkway is not the answer. All of you guys have a parkway, and none of you are suffering like we are. It's horrible. It is horrible, and our kids are suffering for it, and our And our kids are suffering for it and our elderly, our elderly people that live in our community, and it's just not fair. Plus, it's unhealthy and it's unsafe. So thank you.
Keep your comments. Latoya, then Andrew Borvansky.
Hi, good evening. Oh, I guess I should wait. Okay. Hi, good evening, council members. Thank you for hearing from me. First and foremost, I, seven years in District 8, I am a resident there. I wasn't invited, nor did I get the invite to engage, but hopefully this second round, I will hear from someone. I am a small, woman-owned business owner, transportation, and I want to highlight and commend the planning staff on their work on the Age Friendly Community Action Plan. However, my transportation company, which facilitates transportation for ambulatory and wheelchair passengers, with a mission to increase equity, access to care, and social inclusion for our senior community members and developmentally disabled community members, I feel like we fall under the Tier 2 Priority section, but I don't know that alternatives to public transportation have been investigated or considered. While I acknowledge the effort that this work has made so far, I am a community-based service that has difficulty gaining access to whom or how I can partner to address transportation needs for those community members. So some of the terms that I heard this evening that rang true were access, community, transportation, inclusivity, and equity. I am a resident, I am a homeowner, I am a taxpayer, I'm a woman-owned, small business owner, I am a daughter with senior parents that I take care of, and I have a lot of skin in this game. So I'm hoping that that is a consideration, and I hope to hear from someone from all of your districts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Andrew. Following Andrew is Nancy Azavito, and then Marbella Sala.
My name is Andy Borvansky. I'm a homeowner on Willshire Circle, which is a street that borders the west side of Chorley Park, which, which borders Bing Maloney Golf Course. We've, about a year ago, my neighbors got my attention, they said there was some cutting going down in a nature area right behind my house. Went out there, talked to a contractor, and he notified me that it was because of a disc golf course that was going in. For somebody who went to all the meetings for the last 15 years about the parks, disc golf was never brought up, never. I know Ms. Maples was brought into the middle of this, she kind of got forced into it, but we got, I'm, I'm not against disc golf, what I'm against is how they did it. There's no environmental impact report, CEQA is all over it right now, and there's laws that were broke, I think rules that were broke. They, they reclassified the nature areas open area so they could develop it the way they want. They, the head of the landscape, senior landscape architect for the parks told me that he was told by Jay Chenier, our lame duck council member, that Neighborhood Association was behind it, and it wasn't the Neighborhood Association, it was a disc golf course association. We weren't notified of anything. The Golf Course Terrace Neighborhood Association wasn't notified of meetings, they never gave their blessing on it. And it's just, it's a sad commentary that, that that's how we're treated as stakeholders. I speak for our neighbors that border the, the nature area and border the field, and it's, it's just, it's been a farce. It's just been, it hasn't been full disclosure, and that's all we're, you know, we just want full disclosure, let us know what's going on. I just want to add real quick, I think it's a joke that you put public comment last of your meeting agenda. It's not fair for us to sit here for three hours of meeting that don't concern us.
Thank you for your comments.
I mean, to speak, I, I think Mr. Laura is there in the back, if you wouldn't mind, if you have a few minutes to speak. I know that our team at YIPSY is working on a full response to the Neighborhood Association's letter, as well as our city attorney's office. So thank you so much for coming.
Hi, my name is Nancy Azavito. I live in District 2. I know you've already heard it from everybody tonight, but this is why I'm here. I live directly on, across the street from the bike trail on Altos Avenue, so I see so much of what goes on. Just to reiterate, we see drug use, we see prostitution, and so much garbage. I know that they have been out there cleaning, they have taken away a lot and a lot of garbage. For that, I want to say thank you, but the homeless are still there and they're just accruing again. So it's just going to turn into the same situation in a short amount of time, because I've been out there watching and I could see what's going on already. They're just continuing to accrue junk. So the effort was fantastic, but it's just going to accumulate the same way again. And to go along with what Christine Jefferson said and the young lady over here, there is just too much garbage going on in that area, there's too much riffraff, too many people that are housing out there, and they get multiple people to come and visit, whether they're coming to hit for their drugs or whatever it is. I've had, right across the street from us, we've had two young ladies that were prostituting in a little encampment. So we want to see this stuff gone. I mean, this is my front yard, basically. So I walk out my house and this is what I see. And we need to get it cleaned up. I mean, that's the bottom line. We need to take care of it. Thank you for your time.
Keep your comments. Marbella Sala is our final speaker this evening.
I'm not here as a Measure U Commissioner and I'm not here as president of Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association. I'm here speaking as a citizen of Sacramento. And I have struggled whether I should say something or not, and I decided to come forth and share my frustration and my comments. And respectfully, this has to do with you, city manager. A few weeks ago, there was an article in Sacramento Bee that showed you attending political, a campaign political forum or event. I was very surprised to see that and discouraged to see the, the lack of judgment. As city manager, you're, you should always show neutrality and impartiality attending the events.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you mind, please, directing your comments to the full council?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, sorry. So as a city manager, the city manager should always show neutrality and impartiality. It's important that that is seen in their community because the city manager makes decisions that affect our entire community. The other point, there, there's two more. One is professionalism. A city manager should uphold the highest level of professionalism because that city manager is the model for the 5,000 employees of the city of Sacramento. The other is being seen, losing the expectation that the public has, and seeing the city manager attend those events not only was upsetting to community members, but it broke the trust or it's breaking, it doesn't do anything to further trust. So in the future, when the city manager makes decisions about attending, consider professionalism, integrity, impartiality, and the commitment that city-
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Now we are moving on to council comments, ideas, questions, and AB 1234 reports, colleagues. Questions, comments? All right. I have Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, I sent you an email about this as well. I was reviewing the living wage ordinance that the city has, and it says that the city manager should produce a report each year by April 30th. And it also said that there should be an audit conducted every three years, so I'm glad Farishna is still in the audience. I don't know if that's been happening, but it's in the city code, and so I'd love to get an update from the city manager and the city auditor about the status of the living wage ordinance reports that are in the code. Also, I just wanted to announce then, since we're not having a meeting for the next couple of weeks, that our office is doing a youth print contest. So anyone under 19 years old can submit something to potentially be screen printed at our Cinco de Mayo event that we're sponsoring with the Little Rider Clubs on May 4th. So Cuatro de Mayo, but still in the spirit of Cinco de Mayo. So if anybody's interested, the details are on our social media, they can email their submissions to millerparkprints@gmail.com by April 27th, and they could potentially get selected to have their print, screen printed at this event with the Little Riders, which should be really fun. So I hope everybody will stop us by the word. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. To my colleagues and to the public, if you haven't been to Trucks and Such in District 7, you have missed a treat, and I am asking you to join us next Friday, April the 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Garcha Bend Park. You can bring your chairs, your blankets, your family and friends, and join us for delicious foods and a wide array of food trucks with relaxing music to get to know the neighbors in the District 7 community. Trucks and Such runs the third Friday of each month, and it will take place from April all the way through September, and we hope you'll take time to see us there. If you don't have all the information that I've just given you, you can check out our District 7 webpage in order to get additional information on the Trucks and Such event. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Talamantes.
Capacito with Karina is this Thursday at Donuts and Coffee. It has been growing so much. Last time, we had about 40 people. It's becoming a fire hazard, so figuring out my next steps, if we're moving to a park and where we're going to go. But the first hour is in English from 9:00 to 10:00, and then I do a Spanish-only speaking component for 30 minutes from 10:00 to 10:30, so please join us.
All right. Councilmember Tal.
Just want to make some community events in our, my district. The Urban League's having their final community clinic on Wednesday, April 17th. They will have local health providers on site to offer health screenings, as well as educational, educational materials and resources. No appointments are needed. You can drop in visits. That will be on April 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Greater Sacramento Urban League on 3725 Marisol Boulevard. Another event happening this weekend in my district is the Wa Lao Posi Satana, Lao New Year. It's celebrating Lao New Year in North Sacramento. We have an amazing Lao community in District 2. There will be almsgiving, blessing ceremony, traditional food, drinks, fun activities, live entertainment, cultural dance, and a princess pageant. It'll be on Saturday, April 13th, and Sunday, April 14th, from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 4845 Rolanda Boulevard, Sacramento, California, 95838.
All right. And then I have a few events to announce. We have our Earth Day cleanup at Mangan Park on April 21st from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., so we'll be partnering with the Mangan Park Neighborhood Association and planting justice to clean up trash, maybe plant some trees, and just do all around a good time over at Mangan Park. So you can join us on the 21st of April at 10:00 a.m. there. We are also hosting, in partnership with our wonderful team at Public Works, our Envision Broadway Workshop. Super excited. It's going to take place at Salvation Army on, on Broadway at, on April 23rd at 5:30 p.m. We invite the community to come out and envision with us about what the next steps of the Envision Broadway project on, on Broadway in Oak Park, so please come join us. And lastly, we will be hosting our District 5 Faith Leaders Network on the 27th of April. This is a really cool project that we do through the district. We invite all of our faith leaders from across the district to come together. Out of our last meeting, we heard that we have quite a few churches in the district who own land, and for those of you who don't know, there's a piece of legislation passed last year that allowed for churches and other faith institutions to more easily build affordable housing on their land. And so we will be hosting a panel discussion for those faith leaders with housing experts and affordable housing members as well to come and speak and how they can learn about how they can do that. Very exciting stuff, so please come join us at any one of those events. And seeing nothing else to come before the council, we are now adjourned at 8:04 p.m.